And you're like, oh no.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the policy meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board for February 8th, 2022. I would remind all trustees to have your cameras off when you are not speaking and to use the chat box to notify me of your hand up. Please be advised that this movie, this movie, oh my goodness, this meeting is being live streamed on the board's YouTube channel. And will also be available after for further, for future viewing. I'd like to start with item 1.1, the land acknowledgement.
Halton, as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surround deeply.
Are steeped in indigenous history.
As together today.
On these treaty land.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
To honor and respect.
Four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
The acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you for that. And I would like everybody to join me in the sign of our faith, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. In light of Black History Month, well, I'd like to say a prayer for Black History Month. Compassionate God, who sent Jesus Christ to deliver us from all manner of injustices and inequalities, create in us new hearts and enlarged visions. To see the image of God in every person irrespective of background, race, and ethnicity. May we be generous in our love of others as we work towards ending racism and injustice. Creating communities of human flourishing through Jesus Christ, your Son, our Lord, who is alive and reigns with you. In the unity of the Holy Spirit, one God, now and forever. Amen. I'd like to move to item two, approval of the agenda. Trustees, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I will move that, O'Hern Chernotta.
Thank you. Trustee O'Hern Chernotta moves. Seconder.
Murphy.
By trustee Murphy. Anybody opposed?
I am, Madam Chair.
Please note that trustee Ian Tomasi is opposed. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Moving on to item three, declarations of conflict of interest. Trustees, do we have any conflicts of interest this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to item four, delegations. There are no delegations that have been submitted. Item number five, approval of the minutes for January 11th, 2022. Trustees, are there any errors or omissions? Seeing none, can I have a motion to accept the minutes of January 11th, 2022?
Murphy will move.
Thank you. Moved by trustee Murphy, seconded by.
I'll second it, O'Hern Chernotta.
Thank you, by trustee, seconded by trustee O'Hern Chernotta. Anybody opposed?
I am, Madam Chair.
Please note that trustee Ian Tomasi is opposed to the minutes of January 11th, 2022. Moving on to item number six, action items, 6.1, Policy I-47, Information Security. Trustees, as you'll recall, this is a new, a new policy that has been provided to us. So this will go to the first board meeting for its first meeting. So may I have a motion, may I have somebody move that the policy committee recommends that the newly drafted policy I-47, Information Security, be forwarded to the February 15th, 2022, regular board meeting for first reading.
Murphy will move.
Moved by trustee Murphy, seconded by.
I'll second it, O'Hern Chernotta.
Thank you, seconded by trustee O'Hern Chernotta. And I will hand it over to our manager of privacy and records information management, Mark Rorschach. Mark, are you with us this evening?
I am. Thank you. And through you, Madam Chair, I want to thank the policy committee for taking the time to review and consider the I-147. The I-147 Information Security Policy is really to address information security requirements that do not currently exist in other Halton Catholic District School Board policies. It's important to note that this policy does outline specific behaviors required by staff to protect the confidentiality, integrity, and availability of HCSB information. And with that, I will open or hand it back to you, Madam Chair, to see if there's any questions.
Thank you, Mark. Much appreciated. Trustees, I'll open the floor to questions. I see trustee Ian Tomasi, you have your hand up. Trustee Ian Tomasi, you have a question?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. Mark, compliance to the Education Act in reference specifically to retention and disposal legislation. Where do we find this? And where do we find it in this policy?
So, thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. The records management policy is referenced under the references. So that's where you would find any policy related to records and information retention.
Okay, so a follow-up.
You have a follow-up question? Yep.
When, which compliance legislation would you be referring to? In other words, can you provide the date when it was last updated by the ministries? Thank you.
The, and through you, Madam Chair, the Ontario Student Record or Ontario Student Record Guidelines were last updated in 2020. And the retention policies have not changed. And through you, Madam Chair.
Thanks, Mark. Much appreciated. Moving on to trustee O'Brien. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so much a question, proposed minor change to this policy that we, but this is related to a question I asked last time to Mark. And I did ask Mark last time whether or not the IT department had the capability of monitoring emails, which I think can be a good thing. And he said yes, if they really wanted to. I think maybe Bill elaborated on that. But I'm wondering where it says under requirements, it says, if you are an employee, third party, or trustee, you must conduct your work on authorized applications and systems.
Yes.
So, I mean, I definitely agree with points two and three. Absolutely. The more PD we do around this, the better. But I'm wondering about number one, especially for trustees, since thinking about the optics of this, trustees hire the director who turns the staff. So I'm wondering if really that's a good thing, since trustees are elected to sort of keep an arm's length away from staff. So my proposal changes that we take the board trustee out and just keep it to employee and third party. Just a suggestion, I threw Madam Chair to my fellow trustees.
So you're looking at, under the requirements, the first line?
Yes, under one, no, sorry, under, yes, if you are an employee, third party, or trustee. I mean, we can maybe word it so that trustee applies to two and three, but I really feel we have to keep our own kind of privacy. Just my opinion, Madam Chair.
Okay. Mark, in regards to what trustee O'Brien has put forward, trustee, can you explain why trustee was included in this?
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair. You all have email addresses with hcdsby.org. You're all connected to our systems. So really, it's, anybody who has access to our systems are vulnerable to unauthorized hackers, attackers. And it would just be ideal that everyone, all stakeholders that have access to our systems undergo or follow the same, you know, reasonable steps, remember, reasonable steps to following the requirements. I understand that there may be concerns about how it's worded and how it might look. But the goal here is to protect all our information systems. Also, the goal is to protect all of you and your families. So it's really about following through as leaders, as the governing body. I understand that, you know, you have the concerns about keeping things separate, but if you are connected to our systems, is board, if it's related to board work, under the AMP FIPPA, if it's related to board business, then it would be subject to those same rules. That being said, if, if you and your colleagues are conducting, are having a meeting outside the board with your personal email addresses, that would be separate. But again, if it's board business, it would be FOI-able. So, you know, it's, it's a gray, it's a gray area here. It's really hard to be perfect on this. So it's, this is really, you know, a policy. And I'm not, I would prefer not to remove trustee, but I will let, you know, all of you discuss that and take into account that the actors that continuously are bombarding our networks with attacks that will, could lead to unnecessary harm to just about anybody, not only you, but your families and our staff. So that being said, I will hand it back over to you, Madam Chair, to see if there's any follow-up questions on that.
Thank you, Mark. So trustee O'Brien, so a question, are you proposing then that we still make that change? Because this is only going to a first reading. We will be getting feedback from stakeholders. And
I'm Madam Chair.
Yep. And apply to our personal emails. So if you want me, I can, I can canvas the rest of the trustees to see if they agree with that change?
Um, I guess I, I would like that definitely, Madam Chair. Thank you. I guess I'm thinking about the way it's worded, must conduct your work, only unauthorized application. Sometimes, as a role of trustee, I think it is appropriate to use your personal email to do work. So I guess I just wondering about the wording. It might be a word crafting question, but Madam Chair, yes, I would love it if you canvass the other trustees.
Okay.
Thank you.
I see, I see Director Daley has his hand up. Director Daley, did you want to add something that maybe Mark hasn't before I canvassed the rest of the trustees? You're on mute.
Thank, thank you. Maybe just briefly, and this is just for consideration, I think if we're thinking about, I did hear the term optics. I think we'd want to think about the optics of, you know, our trustees not aligning to the same sort of security and protection of our system that we would want everybody else to. I'm not sure what optics that sends out as well. Just something to think about.
Okay. Thank you, Director Daley. So then we'll see, I mean, I'll go around the table and ask if trustees are in agreement with what trustee O'Brien has proposed. Trustee Duarte?
I'd like to leave it the same, the way it is.
No change?
No change.
Thank you. Trustee Antomasi?
I would like, I concur with trustee O'Brien.
Okay. Trustee Murphy?
I'm opposed to the change. It gives us protection also by having the system being able to trace anybody who would potentially steal our identity, for example.
Thank you. Trustee O'Hern Chernotta?
Hi, I would like to leave it as is. No changes?
I would concur. No change at this point. So trustee, trustee O'Brien, do you have a follow-up question?
No, but I'm sure. I'm, you've gone around everybody that's here, correct?
Yes, we have some regrets this evening. So yes, that's everybody.
Thank you. And thank you, fellow trustees, for weighing in on that.
Okay. Thank you, trustee O'Brien. I'm going to move on to trustee O'Hern Chernotta, because we haven't heard from her yet. Trustee O'Hern Chernotta, you have the floor.
Okay, beat me to it. I was just gonna type in, withdraw my hand, but I was just gonna say, even in the private sector, these requirements are very similar. It protects, it protects ourselves, and it protects everything. And we should be role models, so we should be following the requirements of everybody else. So I think it's perfect. And by the way, just for full disclosure, I did click on one of those emails that I wasn't supposed to, Mark. So I myself got caught. So I think it's good safety and security.
Thank you, trustee O'Hern Chernotta. Me too. So don't feel bad. I got roped into one as well. Trustee Ian Tomasi, so sorry, just to confirm, trustee Murphy, you've withdrawn your hand?
Yes, I have. Thank you.
Okay. So we've gone through all new speakers. So trustee Antomasi, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Mark, the Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection and Privacy Act, I don't see that reference in this particular policy. Along with the Youth Criminal Injustice Act, those are pertinent legislation that are, have governing principles over information security. I'm just wondering what your thought of it, your thoughts are, why it's not included?
And through you, Madam Chair, trustee Antomasi. So actually, can you just go down here a little bit? I thought someplace in here, the Education Act, Child Use and Family Services Act, I thought it was on the next page. So the next page, there it is. It's listed there, AMP FIPPA. On, yeah. So everything is here as per your question. And through you, Madam Chair.
Follow-up, Madam Chair. Sorry, I didn't see page nine, so I.
Go ahead.
I did skip page nine. However, I still don't see the Youth Criminal Justice Act.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair.
And the Workman, excuse me, I'm not finished. Workplace Safety and Insurance Act.
Through you, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Trustee Antomasi, as I've mentioned in previous meetings, our requirements for privacy and security roll up to the AMP FIPPA legislation. And in the legislation, it says that we are required to take reasonable steps. And if you take a look at the other pieces of legislation that you are referring to, there will be a provision someplace in there that'll say, depending on the type of institution that you are, you may be, you may be subject to that legislation, in this case, AMP FIPPA, for school boards in Ontario. Through you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mark. Much appreciated. Trustees, do we have any further questions? Okay. Thank you, Mark. Seeing none, we'll go to a recorded vote to present this meeting, I mean, this new policy to the board meeting for its first reading. Trustee Duarte?
I'm in.
Thank you. Trustee Antomasi?
Against.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Hern Chernotta?
In favor.
I am also in favor. That's four to two. The policy will be brought to the next board meeting. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 6.2, this is Policy V-04, School Fundraising. Trustees, may I have a motion that the policy committee recommends that Policy V-04, School Fundraising Activities, be forwarded to the February 15th, 2022, regular board meeting for approval?
I'll move it, O'Hern Chernotta.
That's right.
Trustee O'Hern Chernotta, moved by trustee O'Hern Chernotta, seconded by trustee O'Brien?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Superintendent Loffs, over to you.
And through you, Madam Chair, and good evening, all trustees. We're pleased to present Policy 504, School Fundraising Activities. We're presenting very minor changes to this policy for trustees to review. We've added some additional references. We've added some clarifying wording around compliance, and we've also added some language that updates to legislation or guidelines, take into consideration any updates to said legislation or guidelines at future dates. Madam Chair, we're open to questions.
Thank you, Superintendent Loffs. Trustees, I'll open the floor if there's any questions. Okay. Seeing none, we'll move it to a recorded vote. Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Ian Tomasi?
You missed my hand up, Madam Chair, but I'm against. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Chernotta?
In favor.
I am also in favor. And so the policy will be brought to the next board meeting. Thank you, Superintendent Loffs. Moving on to item 6.3, we Moving on to item six point three, we have policy IV dash zero six, school sites and facilities. Trustees, can I have someone please move that the policy committee recommends that policy IV dash zero six, school sites and facilities criteria be forwarded to the February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two regular board meeting for approval?
Duarte?
Moved by trustee Duarte, seconded by?
Murphy.
Trustee Murphy, thank you. Um, Superintendent Merrick, are you here with us this evening?
Madam, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Um, maybe I'll start and if Superintendent Merrick might join in, uh, I believe Bronco Avitovich, our senior manager, is also on the line from planning to help with us with this one.
Okay, okay.
So I'll just start it off, and if it's okay, hand it over then to, uh, to Bronco as well.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. And, uh, again, through you, uh, Madam Chair, uh, we're pleased to present policy four oh six, school sites and facility criteria. Um, we have some minor revisions to it. Um, and, uh, Bronco Vinaicch, our senior manager of planning, or Ryan Merrick, our superintendent of facilities, is, are available with any additional questions.
Thank you, Superintendent Loffs. Uh, trustees, we have questions. I see, great, uh, trustee Antomasi, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, through you, um, whoever wants to address this particular question, uh, as we go to page seventeen, uh, number five, uh, it states that staff has the discretion to reduce the size of the school site. Wondering how that would work simply because, um, the footprint, the, the dictates the school site. Um, as such, there isn't much movement. The only time there would be any movement into reducing the site would be if there's, you know, uh, increased amount of lands that's not usable. So whoever wants to address that particular question.
Um, thank you, trustee Antomasi. Do Superintendent Loffs, do you want to start with that? Do you understand the question?
I, I do understand the question. I'm just wondering if, if Bronco is available. Is he on the line right now with us, or?
Uh, I can check.
Nope, there he is.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I was just hoping if, um, trustee Antomasi could just re-rep that question. I was trying to follow along, but, um, I believe that question
School site selection, I can do that, Madam Chair. So, um, page seventeen, number five, uh, it says that staff has discretion to reduce the size of the school site. Okay. I wish for you to address, how is that possible when school sites are stipulated and the land surrounding it is dependent on one, the size that speaks to the footprint and the amount of students that are gonna be in there?
Right. So, uh, um, Madam Chair, through you. Is that okay?
Absolutely. Sorry about that. Yes.
Thank you. Uh, so to address that point, um, this, this can be in particular cases where there are synergies for the school site. Let's say, for example, when it's next to a park, there are opportunities for sharing of fields, parking spaces. So in, in certain circumstances, the board has been successful in reducing the site size. Uh, the legislation, uh, provides maximums, but, um, as, um, we get more creative in terms of developing our school buildings in terms of cost savings, there are opportunities for cost savings in terms of the amount of land that we purchased as well. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Um, trustee Antomasi, do you have a follow-up question?
I do. Um, so the next question would be, that would revolve around when you sue the site. So you speak to what are the things that one would look for in site selection? Um, I don't see anything in there that would speak to being in a position or being in a location or choosing a location that would allow for, uh, community, uh, use of the facilities. The, um, education act, uh, and specifically their planning, um, guidelines speak to, um, having schools located where the population, the community can share the facilities. Can you point to me where in this particular policy we speak to that or address that?
Superintendent, sorry, Bronco, are you good to answer this?
Sure. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so, uh, trustee Antomasi, so under a early identification of site, sites, I, Roman numeral two, uh, the board will cooperate with the municipality to locate a school site adjacent to municipal park plan or other services that have synergies with the school use. So this would, this would, um, allow us to work with the municipalities and also just to, um, reassure the board that staff do meet on an annual basis to determine, um, municipal needs and other community partner needs in terms of, uh, enabling any future opportunities where, where we can situate our school sites for the benefit, benefit of the community.
Point of clarification, Madam Chair?
What is your point of clarification, trustee Antomasi?
Under item six, fiber optics, um, if that's a requirement and fiber optics is not available in a particular location, how do we facilitate that?
I, I could speak to that too, Madam Chair. If that's okay?
Yes, thank you, please.
Uh, through you, Madam Chair. Um, so I believe trustee Antomasi is referring to, um, site criteria uh, for school sites, eight, um, Roman numeral six. Um, so this is for, um, services such as fiber optic. And he is correct, um, so fiber optic won't always be available when we develop the site. Oftentimes, fiber optic is provided afterwards. Um, this is just criteria, not necessarily, not necessarily will be there at all times when we look for the site.
Thank you very much, Bronco. Is there any other, um, questions, trustees? Okay, seeing none, we'll take this to a recorded vote. Um, trustee Duarte?
Uh, in favor.
You, trustee Antomasi?
Against.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Uh, trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Trinota?
In favor.
And I am in favor as well. Thank you very much for that. Um, moving on to item six point four. Um, policy II dash three nine, progressive discipline and safety in schools. Um, trustees, can I have somebody please move that the policy committee recommends that policy II dash three nine, progressive discipline and safety in schools be forwarded to the February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two regular board meeting for approval?
I'll, I'll move it. O'Hern Trinota?
Thank you, trustee O'Hern Trinota. And seconded by?
Murphy.
Thank you. Uh, Superintendent Cordero, you have the floor. You can just let us know about these changes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, this is the product of three months' work committed both to policy II thirty-nine and its associated administrative procedure, VI forty-four. There were, there was a working group of about twenty to twenty-five members representing a variety of stakeholders from trustees to CPIC and CAC members, superintendents, uh, system and school-based staff and students. There was a number of clarifying language that was, uh, adopted in or changed into the policy, specifically in areas of purpose, application, and scope. There are also adjustments in the requirements and definitions of the policy to align with the most recent updates to a variety of PPMs that were released by the Ministry of Education from the mid-June twenty twenty-one to the mid-November twenty twenty-one period. So we offer the, the policy for your consideration, and hopefully we can a- answer any questions that you may have. I do have with me this evening Vince Chinanea, who's principal at St. Dominic's Catholic Elementary School, who served as one of the co-chairs. Unfortunately, Mrs. Kathleen Morale, who is the principal at Corpus Christi, who also served as a co-chair, is unable to be with us tonight, but I want to acknowledge her good work as well.
Thank you, uh, Superintendent, uh, Cordero. Trustees, I'll open the floor, and welcome, uh, Principal Chinanea. Nice to have you with us. Um, trustee O'Hern Trinota, you have the floor.
Through you, Madam Chair, to Superintendent Cordero. Wow, what a document. I, I read it, I think, three times yesterday. Uh, with all the subgroups that were involved, it would be really, um, probably not responsible of me to ask question to try to add anything in there. I think you guys, as a group, have created quite the fulsome document. And sitting on the discipline committee, um, being able to use this document, uh, when it comes to us is very helpful. So I, I just really want to say, well done. Very fulsome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee O'Hern Trinota. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Um, can we scroll down in this policy to under principles and under safety, where, where has the bullet filming and or posting images of physical altercations or any other infractions of the school code of conduct? Can we find that? Again, I said filming and or posting images of physical altercations or any other infractions of the school code of conduct.
It's on page four. Yeah, there it is.
There it is in red.
Yeah.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, this is just a kind of a comment, but I, I am sort of proposing a a question for, a little small change here. Um, I, I'm looking at this bullet, and I'm, I'm thinking of incidences where this has happened, people have filmed these altercations. And, um, I think there's two reasons why people film. There are people who do film, yes, to further victimize the person. They post it. Makes it worse than it actually is, and I've seen that even with some of the kids I've taught. So I definitely see the reason for having something in here. At the same time, there are people who do film in order to, um, actually prove the incident took place. So, um, I'm just putting it out through you, Madam Chair, to the trustees, what they think about this. Can we tweak it in a way that we do follow the spirit of this, um, bullet? And yet not take away from, um, people who film something because they know they have to, otherwise no one's gonna believe them.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. Actually, maybe what we could do is we can ask the question, um, is that piece, putting in the filming piece, um, is, can we actually restrict that? Can we actually say you're not allowed to film? And then are we going to say then we can't film at all? So maybe Superintendent Cordero, you can let us know if this is actually, um, language that isn't violating people's freedoms?
Well, it, um, whenever you're filming an incident that clearly, um, is doing harm, whether it's physical nature, sexual nature, or whatnot, you, you are perpetuating in, in some ways, the act itself. Uh, the first call to duty is always to report an incident. And, um, whether it's pick up your phone to make a call to nine one one or to a parent or to an adult that can assist in putting an end to the physical altercation or otherwise. Yeah, it's something we can do. You know, it's for your consideration.
Madam Chair, can I respond to that, please?
A- absolutely, trustee O'Brien, follow-up?
Thank you. Um, I hear what trust, uh, Superintendent Cordero is saying, and I definitely agree that a filming of an altercation could perpetuate the abuse, the victimization, and make it worse than it is. At the same time, I know sometimes filming can actually even stop the abuse because people know they are filmed. So, um, I don't know if I can move this forward until there's some change here. I mean, even after the word filming, unless done for legal purposes, I'm not sure. Like, I'm searching here too, and I, I really wouldn't mind hearing from some of my other fellow esteemed trustees. How they feel about this. Maybe it's just resonating only with me. I don't know. So thank you, Madam Chair. If I'm asking if I could hear from my other trustees, if that's okay?
Absolutely. Uh, trustees, can we maybe hear, um, I see trustee Murphy, your hand just went up. Um, it, it, I'm assuming it's in regards to this. Do you want to comment?
Uh, yes, I'll, I'll just, I can put in, throw my opinion into the ring. Um, I, I hear what trustee O'Brien is saying. If you think back to some of the, um, you know, some of the terrible incidences that happened just last year, you know, they only were taken seriously once it was filmed, the, once the film was revealed of what actually happened. Um, so I understand that, but the other side of that is you can't control the intent of, of the person filming. Um, so, uh, you know, I think if we leave it, if we're looking at, it's in the context of the school environment versus, um, versus the, you know, the environment at, at large where, where some of those terrible violent acts happened. Um, I would, I, I, that's where I'm struggling with. I think, uh, I, I think once you open the Pandora's box and, and you allow filming, if the intent is to record or for justice, well, then that can be manipulated. So I, so I find it, I understand what you're saying, trustee O'Brien. I, I don't know how to fix it, but I would be worried by allowing, uh, the filming also.
Uh, thank you, uh, trustee Murphy. Does anybody else want to weigh in on this piece? Uh, so I have a question in regards to the filming piece.
Madam Chair, I had my hand up at seven thirty-nine before, uh, trustee Murphy.
No, trustee Antomasi, I know you did, but when I made a call for it, I was asking specifically in response to this. I have you in the lineup. I know you have questions. I, this was a call for this. So do you have a comment on the filming piece?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
So that would be governed by federal jurisdiction or federal law, which allows the use of cell phones for the purpose of documenting. So I don't even know why we're discussing it, simply because it's out of our jurisdiction. That should be imported from the federal, uh, federal code, along with the provisional, provincial code.
Thank you, trustee Antomasi. Um, so, sorry, Superintendent Cordero, I do have a question. And my question is, who then decides what is considered film, filming, um, in a way that is an infraction? Because to me, it sounds like it could be very subjective as opposed to objective. So who determines that? And is it going to be consistent from school to school to school? Because we all know that the schools have their own climate and principals have their own abilities to make decisions. So if we're going to say this is what we're looking at, it has to be consistent across the board.
Could, could I make a proposal? Sorry, I, I can hear. Could I make a proposal or suggestion?
Yes, sorry, my mute button stuck. Yes, absolutely.
What, what if we change the language to posting images or video recordings of physical altercations or any other infractions of the school code of conduct? As opposed not to the filming piece, but the posting of images and filming? Sorry, you're muted, uh, Madam Chair.
So I'll see what other trustees think. I, I prefer that. I agree that it shouldn't be used in any way. Uh, it, it actually borders into bullying and cyberbullying and lots of other, um, issues within, um, within our, our, our policies. Um, I just, I, I worry about that filming piece, not because of the intent, but who makes the decision on what, what is considered appropriate and what isn't? Um, trustees, sorry, trustee O'Hern Trinota, I noticed your hand went up. Did you want to comment as well before we, uh, we take a look at possibly amending this?
I would, actually. Um, so I appreciate Superintendent, through you, Madam Chair, Superintendent Cordero's Superintendent Cordero's, you know, collaboration. But I hate to simplify things, but if we're filming an altercation or an infraction, we should be doing something else. I think it was already going to a teacher, calling 911. We shouldn't be standing there filming. So I like it exactly the way it is, because we could maybe say no posting, but someone's still filming it. They're showing it to their friends in the cafeteria. So I like it just the way it is.
Hey, so I think we're, Trustee Duarte, we haven't heard from you. Not to put any pressure on you, but we, I think we might have some, some difference here. Do you have any comment or concern on this? Trustee Duarte?
No comment. Let's leave it the same way. I like that.
You like it the way, so you like the way it's presented. Okay. So the way I see it, that's three against, oh, is it? Hold on. Let me go back and double check my notes here so I can make sure. So let's go through this to see, to leave it the way it is versus what Superintendent Cordero has put forward. So Trustee Duarte, you say leave it the same. Trustee Intomasi?
I'm not quite sure of your purpose, Madam Chair. You're asking us, how do we feel about making the change?
I'm asking if you want to leave it the same, the way it's presented now, or make the change?
Can we not do that through a motion so that we can discuss it?
Well, Trustee O'Brien has already said that he wants to remove it.
Okay, so we need a second there. Has anybody seconded, Trustee O'Brien?
Trustee Intomasi, we can do it via consensus. This is a policy committee. It's, it doesn't have to be formal if there, if we have agreement on it. So that being said, are you?
I don't agree with this process.
Okay, thank you. So you don't, I'm sorry, you don't agree with the process?
I do not agree with the process. So I will not give a commentary.
So you do not want to give feedback on whether or not we leave filming in or not? Just to be clear.
Correct.
Because I don't want you to come back and say that you didn't have an opportunity to give an opinion on this.
I've given you my opinion. I don't agree with the process. There are other legislative elements that need to be entered into that.
Okay, so I'm going to take that as an abstention. Trustee Murphy?
I am on the fence, but I think I'm going to say to keep it as it is. I was involved with this committee. It was very, very fulsome. A lot of people involved and ever, believe me, everything was, was reviewed several times. So I think we should leave it as it is.
Okay. Trustee O'Brien, I'm safe to say that you?
Yes, I'm in favor of the proposal made by Superintendent Cordero.
To remove it, okay. Trustee O'Hearn-Turnata, you want to see it left the way it is?
Yes, please.
Okay. And I would like to see it changed the way Superintendent Cordero has presented. So that means, so that's one, two, three in favor to leave it the way it is, one abstention, and two for change. So help me out here, because I've got to recognize, and we might have to be a little bit more formal with this. To me, it doesn't sound like we have an agreement. It's split.
Over it as a motion, sorry, Madam Chair.
Yeah, well, either way, it's, it's not an agreement. It's split. It's three. Okay. Director Daley, you have your, oh, there you are. There you are. Director Daley, you got to put your, you got to put it in the chat for me so I can see, because your, your picture doesn't always come up for me.
Sorry about that. I will do that. I just wanted, before we amend it or take it out, I just, it's unclear to me whether this is language that the committee proposed in their deliberations, or if it's something that's actually from the ministry.
I don't know, Director Daley. We'll have to ask Superintendent Cordero, is this ministry mandated? I didn't hear that in any of the comments.
I don't, I don't believe it was. Through you, Madam Chair, I don't believe it was, Director Daley. I believe that this came, was born out of the conversation of the work done with the working group.
Okay, thank you. So we don't have agreement on this. So, so here's a question. So how do we deal with this, then, guys? Does that mean it fails? Does it mean it reverts back? I definitely don't want to see this eliminated. That's not my position on it. For me, it's just, I actually liked the way Superintendent Cordero had presented it. But if we don't have agreement, we have to figure out how we move forward with this piece. Does anybody?
Madam, Madam Chair, I don't want to put words into Trustee Intomasi's mouth, but if we formalize the motion, he may be prone to vote on it. And then maybe, maybe it breaks the tie. And if not, then we're back where we are anyway. So.
Okay, all right. Sounds good. Thank you. Trustee O'Brien, you said you were going to move the motion?
I move that the word filming and/or be removed from this bullet. I think that will cover it.
Does that, does that capture the way you talked about it, Superintendent Cordero, do you think? As posting images of filter, of physical altercations or any other infractions of the school of, school code of conduct?
I think the, the intent was posting of images or video and/or video recordings of physical altercation. So posting of images and slash or video recordings.
Okay. Is that okay, Trustee O'Brien?
Yes.
So posting images and/or video recordings. And then the rest is the same, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moved by Trustee O'Brien. Do we have a second there? No second there? Okay.
I'll second it just so we can vote.
Okay. Yeah, I was just about to call it. Okay, thanks, Trustee Murphy. Okay, I don't think we need any further discussion on it, so we'll call it to a vote. Trustee Duarte?
Opposed.
Trustee Intomasi?
He was muted.
Oh, Trustee Intomasi?
I'm muted now, so I'm opposed.
Okay. Trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn-Turnata?
Opposed.
Okay. I am also in favor. So, sorry, just to clarify, because I just wrote this down, Trustee Murphy, you were opposed?
I am opposed to the change, yes.
Okay, thank you. Just double checking. Okay, so that's four opposed, two in favor. So the motion fails. This will stay the way it is. Trustees, do we have any further questions?
Madam Chair, I would like to go back to my hand up at 7:39. Thank you.
Trustee Intomasi, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. To Supervisory Officer Cordero, as I look at policy, I'm amiss because I don't see a policy statement that governs the purpose of this particular policy. I see administrative procedures which have, which are put forward by staff. I see no protocols. So my question to you is, can you break up, break down for me how this particular policy includes the administrative procedures within the auspices of the protocols?
Well, the administrative procedures are in VI44, and they're governed by this policy. I'm not quite understanding the question, maybe. Sorry.
All right, I'll refer. May I rephrase it, Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Trustee Intomasi.
So a policy has three parts to it. It has the policy statement, which establishes what it is we're trying to solve. Within that, staff then undertakes to provide administrative procedures on how to safeguard or solve the problem. And then we have the protocols. That's the legislation that governs how we go about achieving the policy. My question is, can you walk me through this particular policy and point me to where we do that and what we do and whether or not the administrative procedures are legal? Because I can tell you, most of the writing of this particular policy is old language, and we know that there's been changes to the Human Rights Code on how we proceed so that we're not being offensive to anyone. I would submit to you tonight that this particular policy requires legal vetting, because I do not believe that the administrative procedures as outlined in this particular policy speak to current legislation and is sensitive to human rights conditions. As a trustee, I have the right to seek tonight to ask policy to refer this particular policy in its entirety to legal. I do not need this to be a motion. I, our governance procedure, policy one, on page two of three, allows the trustee to seek for legal input. I do not believe this particular policy is ready to be sent up to the board to be approved.
Thank you, Trustee Intomasi. You are correct. You do have the ability to seek legal opinion. However, it doesn't mean that it stops this process. What it means is, is you can seek it and you can use that prior. This isn't at the board yet. It's at the Policy Committee. Feel free to, to follow the policy in regards to seeking legal opinions, which I believe is notifying the Director and the Chair. And, you know, it will not stop the process this evening. So we're going to continue.
So then I will, Madam Chair, follow up. Actually, I will then put it forward that this particular policy not go forward until such time that legal input has been received. Thank you.
Okay. Again, thank you, Trustee Intomasi. Unless, are you making a motion to that?
That was a motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, it wasn't clear that it was a motion. So, okay, so that this particular policy receive a legal input before it moves forward. Do we have a second there, trustees?
I'll second it, Madam Chair. Trustee O'Brien.
Seconded by Trustee O'Brien. Okay. Is there any comments or questions on this? Director Daley, I see you have your hand up.
Actually, that was on the, that had to do with the filming and posting amendment. But I guess, if I can, or if I may, I would point trustees to, and not that the number of pages necessarily matters, but the 75-page administrative procedure, VI44, that accompanies policy II39.
Thank you, Director Daley. So, Trustee O'Brien, you have your hand up?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. To Superintendent Cordero, Superintendent Cordero, I was in the, the process, and it was quite rigorous, I feel. I didn't see everything, but I did attend the meetings that I was asked to. Was, just so possibly, this may already been done, was there any legal vetting at all done, in your opinion, at this point?
No, we did not seek legal counsel.
Thank you.
I, I do, if the concerns that Trustee Intomasi brings to the fore are around alignment of the policy to the Human Rights Code, I will point out that on page five of 14, or page 26 of the complete attachment, there were revisions done to the last bullet of that page to identify specific groups protected under the Human Rights Code, students with disabilities, indigenous, black, and racialized students. There are also references to, on page seven, to students with respect to behaviors that are, you know, anti-indigenous racism, anti-black racism, anti-Asian racism, anti-Semitism, Islamophobia, ableism, homophobia, transphobia, anti-oppression education and training. So there are a number of references there specific to protecting those identified groups. There's also referrals on page nine to counseling with child and youth counselors and social workers. There's also references to the standard of care, human dignity on the Human Rights Code on page 10. On page 11, there's a reference to uttering hate bias, hate, sorry, hate-based language, words or actions considered offensive with reference to human dignity in the Ontario You Rights Code, such as persons, a person's age, culture, disability, gender, race, religion, and appearance. So I just wanted to, to point out that, consistent in the policy and more elaboratively in the administrative procedures, the appropriate changes were made to align with PPM 119.
Thank you. Is there a follow up?
Sorry, Madam Chair, I thought I was, I had my follow up. I was moving on to a new question that deals with the same elements.
Okay. Go ahead, Trustee Intomasi.
Thank you. So insofar as the highlighted parts of legislation that refer to the procedure, it doesn't speak directly to the guiding procedures which are approved by law. For instance, there's brand new law that speaks to the current environment, and that is the safety practices of operating through media. This particular policy, it speaks to requirements, it alludes to them, but it doesn't give the administrative procedures on how to go about it. You need to have administrative procedures that are current, which speak to current scenarios and legal definitions. This particular policy, and I appreciate Supervisory Officer Cordero, you've done an admirable job. The fact of the matter is that there are legal elements that are missing here. And I'm speaking only to the legal elements. I'm not talking about the inclusiveness and the references that you've updated. I am speaking to specific legislation that says you can do this, but you can't do that, which now means that this particular policy, its procedures, have to include in the protocols what these new legal nuances are going to be. And this particular policy, and you can't do it, it has to be done by legal. And I don't mean you specifically. I'm talking about staff, unless we have a legal person on hand. That's what I'm alluding to. That's what I'm alluding to. I hope I've made myself clear.
Madam Chair, could I respond to trustee Antomasi's concerns?
A- absolutely. He does have the motion on the table. So, but um, go ahead, uh Superintendent Cordero.
Thank you, uh, madam chair. Uh, to you, uh trustee Antomasi. Those particular items that detail the expectations, the requirements, the administrative steps that are required by law for school administrators to effectively exercise and the definitions that apply to, uh, for example, bullying, cyberbullying, uh, media and so forth are listed in quite a comprehensive way. It speaks to harassment, daily care, violent incident, school expulsions, school climate. Those definitions, those protocols, procedures are in the seventy-five paged document of VI forty-four. It's quite explicit. It's, it's quite comprehensive. It does attribute the changes to uh the various PPMs that have since been modified over the course of uh the last six or seven months of the uh twenty twenty year or calendar year. Many of those speak to mitigating factors, other factors, uh, human rights inequity factors and the Ontario Human Rights Code and various other uh pieces of legislation.
Uh, thank you Superintendent Cordero. Um, uh trustee O'Brien, you have a question?
No, madam chair. Um, I just wanted to um speak to this motion. And my esteemed colleague that brought it forward, I, I could see his concern. I want to just make it clear to him though, that um, this was probably one of the most rigorous processes I, I think a policy's been through that I know of. And I, I've even been involved in writing policy for this board. I myself have attended at least thirty hours of meetings. And that's just myself. And there were many more meetings of the people that I met with behind other door, closed doors to iron this out. And the main, main topic of conversation was usually the legal aspect of this. So I want to assure my um, esteemed trustee that legal has always been on the mind first, first and foremost of the people on this committee. At the same time, this is a very important policy. And I can see is what he's saying that if we're gonna do vote on this finally, we want to make sure that everything is in order. Um, and being on the discipline committee myself, the legal is often a threat to us in the form of, are we legally following everything correctly? So I'm torn here, but, but I think I see the wisdom in getting the legal vetting just because in this time, in this era, um, it seems the legal is being quoted to us so much. And I think I'm speaking from my own experience on discipline, the discipline committee. So I am going to be in favor of this. Thank you, madam chair.
Thank you trustee O'Brien. Um, okay trustees, let's uh take this to a vote. So this motion is um to reiterate, it's this particular policy um be given to, for legal input before it moves forward. It was brought forward by trustee Antomasi and seconded by trustee O'Brien. So we will now take a recorded vote. Uh trustee Duarte.
I'm opposed.
Uh trustee Antomasi.
I'm in favor, madam chair.
Uh trustee Murphy.
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Chernotta.
I'm opposed.
Uh, I am also opposed. So that is four to two. The motion fails. Um, seeing there's no more questions trustees, we will take a vote on the policy to present to the board meeting next week. Trustee Duarte.
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi.
I'm against not.
Sorry. Um, trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
Opposed.
Trustee O'Hern Chernotta.
In favor.
Uh, and I am also in favor. So one, two, so four in favor, two opposed. Moving on to item, thank you Superintendent Cordero, moving on to policy six point five. Um, policy II dash four-two, uh, medical conditions. Trustees, can I have somebody move please? That the policy committee recommends that policy II dash four-two, medical conditions be forwarded along with amendments to the February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two regular board meeting for approval.
Murphy.
Thank you. Moved by trustee Murphy. Second, second.
Duarte.
Trustee Duarte. Thank you, uh Superintendent Bakai. We'll pass it on to you.
Thank you. And through you, madam chair. Policy II forty-two, medical conditions was reviewed as part of the regular review cycle. The policy was last reviewed in December twenty nineteen. Staff have reviewed the policy and apart from minor housekeeping changes to clarify content, no changes to the policy are required at this time. The policy is attached to review and consideration by the policy committee. Happy to take any questions trustees may have.
Thank you Superintendent Bakai. Um. Trustees, do we have any questions? All right. Seeing none, we'll take it to a recorded vote. Trustee Duarte.
I have a question.
Oh, okay. Looks like we've got some hands up now. Trustee Antomasi, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, madam chair. Insofar as um medical conditions are concerned, especially uh when we talk and bring into the discussion VI sixty-nine, VI seventy-nine, VI sixty-five, VI sixty-six, how does this policy address the COVID factor insofar as its administrative procedures and how we would deal with it?
Thank you. And through you, madam chair, I appreciate that question, uh trustee Antomasi. So the, the COVID protocols are part and parcel of all of the procedures insofar that we have our specific protocols that we use to manage COVID. The procedures are as they are in tandem with the COVID protocols, but also separate unto themselves because they have their own separate requirements and their own specific protocols attached to them.
Superintendent Bakai, do you have a follow-up? Uh, trustee Antomasi.
Uh, I do. So my question was specific. I understand that all of these particular policies and PPMs work in conjunction with COVID nineteen and the protocols that are part and parcel of COVID nineteen. The fact of the matter is that in this particular policy, you can only speak about this policy and how the administrative procedures address that particular, the new COVID elements. I don't see anywhere in this particular policy that would refer us to from a protocol perspective or from a procedural perspective that would allude to the new current administrative procedures that have been handed down by both the Ministry of Education and local health.
Thank you trustee Antomasi. However, we're not talking about uh COVID protocols. We're talking about medical conditions, specifically medical conditions in students with documentation. So i- i- it's not relevant to this policy. Unless you're, unless you're stating that COVID is a condition, um, it's not a condition, uh, it's a virus. And this is specific to medical conditions. So um, do you have, do you have any questions specific?
Follow-up, madam chair.
As long as it's specific to this policy of medical.
Does these particular conditions affect on how you deal with COVID nineteen protocols and procedures? I see nowhere in these procedures that speaks to on how to deal with specifically when somebody has a, one of these conditions and to address the COVID element. That's what I'm referring to, madam chair.
Again, trustee Antomasi, it, it's not part of this. This is medical conditions. COVID is not a medical condition. This is specific to medical conditions and the schools, the school is um responsibilities in regards to the safety of students and staff with medical conditions and documentation that is provided. So we will be moving on. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, I withdraw my question. Thank you.
Thank you trustee O'Brien. Trustees, are there any further questions? Okay. Thank you Superintendent Bakai. We'll take this to a recorded vote. Trustee Duarte.
In favor.
Uh, trustee Antomasi.
Against, madam chair.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Chernotta.
In favor.
I am also in favor. Uh, the policy that's five to one, the policy will be presented to the next board meeting. Moving on to item seven, discussion items. There are no discussion items. Item eight point one to eight point eight point eleven are, are administrative procedures. Trustees, are there any questions? Okay. Uh, moving on to item eight point twelve, please find uh listed here upcoming policies that will be reviewed at the March policy meeting. Item nine miscellaneous, miscellaneous information, there is none. Correspondence, item ten, no, no correspondence was received. Eleven, there is it in camera. There is no need to move into camera. Item twelve, um, motion to excuse absent committee members. We have um trustee Agnew, trustee, oh, um, trustee Carabella and trustee De Rosa have all sent their regrets. Can I have a motion to excuse absent uh committee members?
I'll move it. O'Hern Chernotta.
Thank you. Moved by trustee O'Hern Chernotta, seconded by.
Murphy.
Trustee Murphy. Anybody opposed? Okay. Moving on to item thirteen, may I please have a motion to adjourn?
Duarte.
Moved by trustee Duarte, seconded.
Seconded by O'Brien.
Trustee O'Brien, thank you. Thank you trustees. And we will have uh trustee Duarte. Could you, or could you please lead us in our closing prayer?
Thank you, madam chair. February eighth is an annual day of prayer and awareness against human trafficking. Uh, February eighth is the fifth day of Saint Josephine Bakeda, who was kidnapped as a child and sold into slavery in Sudan and Italy. Once Josephine was freed, she became a canon, a canon, a non-nun and dedicated her life to sharing her testament of deliverance from slavery and comforting the poor and suffering. She was declared a saint in two thousand. So to join me in the sign of her faith, in Father, Son, Holy Spirit, God of all peoples, awaken our hearts and deepen our commitment to work for a world where all are free and able to live lives full of hope and joy. Please help us grow in awareness that you are present in each person and that we are intimately connected to all involved in human trafficking. God of hope and freedom, inspire us in our work to end human trafficking, starting with, within our own communities. Amen. In the Father, Son, Holy Spirit.
Thank you Marvin.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you everyone. And, and that concludes our meeting. Everybody have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Bye everyone.